All right, well, good evening. And thank you to everyone who is here in person and for those who are part of our online audience this evening. As we prepare to begin, we'd like to welcome Bishop Terry Hill, the pastor of our hosting site, The Citadel Church. Inviting him to the stage as he'd like to bring us greetings and share more about their work here at the church as we prepare to get started. Thank you, Bishop Hill.
I did not bring any notes because they too closely resemble my sermon. And I didn't want to go over the time that was allotted. Good evening to everyone. It is so good to welcome you to The Citadel Church for the forum on tonight. It's important to us as a church that we express in every way possible our connection to our community. It's a part of who we are. It's our vision to build community. And so I'm thankful that we could partner tonight and to have so many persons who are interested in what is important to District One, particularly with regards to the education of our children. So I am excited that you are here tonight and want to say to you, you don't have to let this be the last time. And I'm not talking about church services per se. I'm talking about knowing that The Citadel Church is a partner that's not just in the community, but desirous of being connected to the community. And so however we can serve and assist you, please let us know because we want to do that. Again, thank you so much for being here tonight. God bless you.
Thank you so much. Well, I'm pleased to welcome you all to the District One School Board Candidate Forum. As a reminder, District One represents schools in Arlington, Oceanway, Hekshire, San Mateo, and Fort Caroline. We appreciate you for spending your evening with us and demonstrating your commitment to public education and to the future of our city. My name is Rachel Tutwiler-Forten, and I am the president of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund. I'm pleased to co-moderate our school board candidate forums this year with my colleague, Lee Alfred Thomas, who serves as JPEF's manager for data and policy and played a leading role in organizing the 2024 forums. JPEF is an independent, high-capacity local education fund with the mission of activating community support, connecting partners, and advancing effective ideas for the success of all students. Our work is grounded in research and best practice. We also actively seek input from parents, educators, students, and community leaders. These forums are being put on by a coalition of nonpartisan nonprofit organizations. So we'd like to thank our forum partners. If we could have representatives stand as we recognize you. The Duval County Council of PTA, I believe Melissa's out there at the registration desk. We give her a hand. The Jacksonville Civic Council, we have Don Emmerich. The Jacksonville Public Education Fund, of course, the Jacksonville Tributary. The NAACP Jacksonville Chapter. Nino Forward. And Jacksonville Today. Unfortunately, Mr. Tony Ricardo informed us this afternoon that he would not be able to attend due to being under the weather. We wish him a speedy recovery, which means that tonight we will be hearing solely from Dr. Nadine Ebry. Before we begin, I want to share our ground rules for this evening. I'll just basically kind of share with you all how we're approaching all of these forums. For the candidates, we start with brief introductions. Typically, each candidate has two minutes to introduce themselves, and we would tend to do that alphabetically. Then we transition to the question portion of the evening. We would have alternated the order of respondents, but of course, we'll hear solely from Dr. Ebry tonight. And we'll give her up to 90 seconds, about a minute and a half, to answer each question. And to keep us on track this evening during the introduction and question and answer portion of the program, one of my colleagues will be putting up a yellow warning card when you have 15 seconds left for your introduction or response, and a red warning card to please end your answer when your time is over so that we can politely move on. The goal is to get to as many questions as possible. So we just ask that you keep in mind that time constraint that we have this evening so we can make sure we can get to a number of questions. Our questions have been sourced in a collaboration between JPEF staff with some additions from our organizational partners. We'll also take some questions from those attending in person and virtually. So if you're joining us on Zoom, please submit your questions using the question and answer section on the platform. If you're on Facebook, we invite you to chat your questions to us. And here in the room, when you walked in, we gave you a question card, and we would ask you to write your question on that card, and we will collect it from you so that we can get to that when we open it up for audience questions. We'll do our best to get to as many questions as possible, but please know that depending on the number of questions we have, we might not be able to get to all of them. But we also want to make sure that as many people as possible benefit from the information that is shared tonight. So we invite you to join us on Facebook. We are at the Jacksonville Public Education Fund and invite you to share this information as we're sharing the forum live from Facebook even as we speak. So we invite you to do that now if you're able. At the end of the forum, Dr. Ebry will have two minutes to provide us with closing remarks as well. Some of the topics on the agenda to look out for this evening include school closures, the role of the school board, equitable education, teacher recruitment and retention, and parent and caregiver engagement. I also want to remind you of some very important election information before we begin. The primary election will be held on Tuesday, August 20th, with early voting happening from August 5th through August 18th. You still have time to sign up for a mail ballot if you wish to do so. If no school board candidate in some of the races receive more than 50% of the vote, there will be a runoff between the top two candidates in November. Now, for this particular election cycle, this opportunity is only available in District Five where there are three candidates. So the majority of these races will be decided on August 20th, and that's why it's very important that not only you cast your vote, but you encourage those within your network to do the same. For the potential of a District Five runoff, a District Five runoff in November, that would be happening on November 5th with early voting happening from October 21st through November the 3rd. So before we dive in, I just want to thank again Dr. Ebry for being here with us, and thank you for participating this evening. The school board elections do provide the community with an important opportunity to engage with the public education system. And we're so grateful you've taken time to speak directly with voters and for your interest in public service. We also appreciate Mr. Ricardo for his interest in public service.
All right, so as we get prepared to delve into the questions and hear from the candidate or Dr. Ebry, we also want to ensure the community understands the role of the school board. The school board sets policies that govern our schools, such as the district's code of conduct. The school board is also tasked with adopting policies to comply with education-related legislation like those that may come down the pipeline from federal and state governments. The school board is also responsible for the budget of the school district. Although the state of Florida has a big say in how the funding the school districts receive, the school board determines how a lot of these funds are distributed throughout the district. The school board also approves curriculum for all schools. Therefore, they are directly responsible for how future curriculums, how our future accountants learn math, how our future surgeons start out in science, and how our future writers learn nuances of language. Finally, the school board oversees facility issues. It is the responsibility of the school board to approve or deny in school, deny changes in school academic programs like magnet programs and which schools should remain open or closed down.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and dive in now, and we'll get started with introductions. So Dr. Ebry, if you could, please introduce yourself to forum attendees. And your sort of time cards will be right over there with Taj.
So hi, everyone. How are y'all doing? Awesome. So one, I just want to thank you. I just want to say thank you to JPEF and all the organizations that put this on. It's so important to keep the community informed. My name is Dr. Nadine Ebry. I am the mother of a child who's in Duval County Public Schools. She's in the back. Say hey Clementine. I'm also the wife of Clement Ebry and an educator. I taught in Duval County Public Schools for 10 years. I'm an educator at heart. My mom was an educator. I went into education. My sister was an educator who's back there as well before she left and went into law. So we have a whole bunch of educators in our family. I graduated from Homay High that was in Brevard County. Wasn't the best student growing up, but I vowed to myself that I would be the best teacher that I'd never had. And so I went to the University of North Florida, graduated with my bachelor's in elementary education, and then taught for a few years before going back and getting my master's in educational leadership. Initially, I wanted to become an assistant principal and a principal, and then I went back and got my doctor in educational leadership. I really desire to be a learner. I'm a researcher. I love to not base things on what I see on the news, but on factual information. And I can bring those skills to the school board as well. And so three of the things that I really hope to accomplish as a school board member, one, to ensure that our kids are learning in an environment where they feel safe and where they feel like they belong, where they don't feel like they're getting attacked by extreme policies, by extremist groups who are pushing into our school boards, to ensure that I am ensuring that we're creating policies that students get equitable access to STEM all throughout our district, and also to ensure that we're bringing in the community's voices, all of your voices, into the policymaking process because I know my capacity and I know I cannot do it alone. I know that the seven school board members cannot do it alone, and we need the whole community.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So we're going to start with our series of questions now. We're going to start with the challenge that has activated our community in a pretty major way. And we're going to start with the recent master's facilities plan proposals and school closure recommendations. So Dr. Ebry, as we are sure you know, the district has passed a sales tax a couple of years ago to help renovate and rebuild a number of school facilities. At the same time, the cost of construction has skyrocketed, and enrollment has declined more than previously expected, meaning the district is not able to build everything that was promised in that sales tax campaign and has begun to float the idea of potential school closures instead. Can you describe how you, in partnership with the now new superintendent and the board, would evaluate the district's facilities plan, given the challenges, challenging circumstances, and ensure thoughtful use of the district's capital and sales tax funds while addressing the community's growing concerns?
All right, so one, I would form a task force that includes all voices from students. We often leave out students, and they're the most important piece of the puzzle. Teachers, people in the community, businesses, to ensure that we're getting all of their voices and bringing them all to the table, city representatives. And so I was actually like doing research about what other districts have done. And I saw that in Denver, Denver Public Schools, they created a facilities master's plan. And this included the entire community in the actual plan. So they didn't hear about it afterwards where the community began to, you know, really feel the effects of what was happening, but the community heard about it, and they were in this process and creating this plan. And so being able to bring the community in could really help to prevent the community from feeling like, wait, what happened? What just happened to us? So just keeping them in the loop as well. And so in addition to that, ensuring that we're doing a thorough evaluation of all the conditions of all the schools in our district, are really looking at the usage and the age of the buildings as well, and ensuring that we're being transparent in financial management. In addition to that, it's super important to ensure that we have open communication and transparency. Transparency is so important. There should be no decision that catches the community off guard. And so that's extremely important, and also to provide support for the families that are to provide support for the families that are affected afterwards, to ensure that they have all the resources that they need to move forward if their schools have to close.
Thank you, thank you for that. And in the event that there are some schools that possibly in your district still may close, what will your approach be to a school's community or your school's community? And how will you guide them in understanding that decision that was made by the district?
Absolutely. So when reading through the various policies, I looked at policy 8.51. This is the ACE policy that stands for Academic and Community Excellence. And so recently, there's another school that recently closed. It's actually called Highlands Estates. And they went through this process where they're all involved in the process of renaming the school, learning about new transportation and engaging the entire community. And they actually combined with my daughter's school, Highlands Elementary. And so now it's going to be called Highlands Estates. And so really ensuring that the community is involved, ensuring that there's transparent communication, and also ensuring that they get support during the transition process. And so a lot of times when, you know, things like this happen, like a school closes, sometimes the community, they don't know what to do. They're struggling on figuring out, how's my kid going to go to school now that my neighborhood school is closed? So really supporting the community as best as possible throughout the process.
Thank you so much. Well, this next question comes to us from our partners at the Jacksonville Civic Council. We're living through a defining moment in which the future of public schools and the future of public education is being shaped for generations to come. The Civic Council launched a strategic plan for education that emphasizes a vision in which we retain and attract new talent to Jacksonville to access our best-in-class education. Two pillars of that plan focus on inspiration, so inspire people to act with vision and a greater story of Jacksonville, or a story of greater Jacksonville, and two, preparation, which is building a system of education that produces the workforce of tomorrow. So let's take those goals one at a time. For inspiration, what education systems or school districts across the nation, for example, would you consider to be world-class and why? And what might we do in Duval County to move our system in that direction? We want to know what initiatives you may prioritize to enhance our public education system.
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, I don't know if I mentioned this in my opening speech, but I currently serve as a global education community manager for the largest ed tech company in the world. And so in this position, I work with districts all throughout the world in using innovative technologies. And so I started here in Duval, where I worked for our technology department, and then started doing similar work, but globally. And so in this position, I've been able to see what different districts are doing and how we kind of compare and level up to them. And I do see that we are extremely behind in Duval County, especially when it comes to STEM. And so right now, we're in a day and age, and you'll probably hear me say this statistic over and over and over. By the year 2030, 2030, we're not far away from it. It sounds far away, but in only a few years, by the year 2030, about 67% of jobs are going to require STEM. However, if you look in our school system, especially in our marginalized schools, many of them are not getting access to it. And especially because of low reading scores and things like that, we sometimes see a drilling kill instruction. And so when, just starting with the neighborhood, neighboring county, Putnam County, all of their students in K through five are getting access to STEM in their resource classes, and they have good partnerships where students are learning about cybersecurity, where students are learning about computer science, and they're being prepared for the future jobs. And if we look at LAUSD in California, so I actually presented with them in Colorado a couple of weeks ago, and they're doing innovative things, ensuring that students are getting access to STEM and innovative technologies, and even using technologies to ensure that students are learning how to read.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And now onto that goal of preparation. What are the top two or three skills we need to be teaching our kids so they are ready to join the workforce of the future? And as a school board member, what policies would you put in place to assure students reach those skill sets?
Yeah, so again, of course, them, ensuring that, I looked through all of our policies. We didn't have one ensuring equitable access to STEM. So we're seeing that certain schools are getting access to it, certain schools are not. Literacy is very important. Our students need to know how to read. But it's also important to look at the resources that we're using to teach them as well. And so problem solving. A lot of students graduate and they struggle with problem solving. Some employers have even said about more than 50% of people interviewing for jobs and even on the jobs can't even look people in the eye. And so really teaching students communication skills and those soft skills as well. And then also financial literacy. I know I didn't grow up with much, and so when I graduated, I really had to teach myself a lot. And my siblings had to teach me as they learned how to manage money because we didn't really have a lot growing up. We went through school and scholarships. We graduated and tried to figure it out, paying off student loans. And so really teaching students financial literacy because it's not necessarily about how much you make, but you have to know how money works as well.
Thank you for that, Dr. Ebry. So just for the audience, we're moving into equality and equity, or the definition. Equality in education means providing the same resources for everyone, whereas equity requires us to take into account each student's individual needs and provide tailored support accordingly. So regardless of the district, the majority of Duval County Public Schools serve students who are racially diverse, that's over 50%, and are labeled as economically disadvantaged. How do you plan to equitably support all students as a school board member for the entire county?
That's a really good question. So one, through policy, ensuring that all the policies ensure that students are getting an equitable education, ensuring that the policies are not biased towards certain groups. It's important to ensure that we're voting in people who believe in equity because equity is a beautiful thing, and I will not allow anyone to redefine what equity is. It's ensuring that students get what they need. Like, for example, if you have a class full of students and one student can't see, I'm not giving all of them glasses. They all don't need glasses. And so just as an educator, I had to ensure that all the students got what they needed. And so ensuring that I evaluate those policies to ensure that there's no biases or no groups are being attacked, and no board member is attacking or using groups to attack marginalized groups. Ensuring that there's professional development because I realize a lot of the misunderstandings happen from people just not knowing, not being educated on on what the issues are and how to properly serve our students. So ensuring that there's professional development for our educators, for our leaders. Even our school board members should be going through some of them too. So and then also that we are being equitable in regards to the resources that we are allocating, ensuring that every student at every school gets what they need. Because if our motto is every student, every day, we need to ensure that every student, every day, is getting the education, and it's not going to look the same across the board, it's not going to look the same across our district.
All right, so the next two questions are about challenges that are not specific to Duval County. They represent nationwide issues. The Duval County Public Schools is working with many partners to address as we speak. Here in Duval County, the percentage of third graders passing the Florida State Assessment for Reading has not exceeded 52% in the past 10 years of available data. What are your thoughts on how we might approach this historic issue?
Yeah, absolutely. So one, really looking at early literacy programs and partnering with programs that really value early literacy. That's super important, but I don't think it's talked about enough. A lot of, so I taught every grade level from kindergarten to eighth grade with the exception of first grade. And so one thing that I realized is that when I taught kindergarten, and then later on, when I was in fifth grade and I had some of the same students, the students who struggled in kindergarten were the same students who were struggling in the fifth grade. And so we really need to catch it early on because if they don't get a teacher who is really investing in them, what's going to happen is the students who are behind in kindergarten is just going to continue being a trend. So we really need to keep, catch kids early on, working with them in literacy, ensuring that we're approaching the root causes, getting back to the root on why students are struggling to read, and then also giving teachers autonomy to teach. I realize that sometimes when I did the best as an educator, it was the times when I had autonomy. And the schools where the principal gave me autonomy, my students were able to thrive. And so being able to give them autonomy, we see that in private and charter schools, a lot of teachers have more autonomy than in the public school sector. And so we need to ensure that we trust the people that we hire, trust that they're going to teach our students, trust that they're going to do whatever they can do to ensure that our students succeed by the end of the year.
Excellent, thank you. In Duval County, the number of students who are considered chronically absent, which is missing four weeks of school, has nearly doubled to 27% from where it was the year before. The COVID-19 pandemic was at 15.6% then. What role do you see the school board playing in getting students to school?
Yeah, so one, going beyond the basics. I know I hear a lot of people say, all we need is reading, writing, and arithmetic. We need more than that. If we do reading, writing, and arithmetic, our kids are going to graduate, and they're not going to find jobs. So we need to go beyond reading, writing, and arithmetic. We need to ensure that students are, of course, getting, they need to know how to read, write, and also do math. But also, we need to ensure that we're creating an atmosphere that students aren't going to want to miss. Students are coming to a space where this innovation, a lot of times when programs are, whenever there's funding problems, a lot of times we, programs start getting chopped from schools, start taking out, oh, let's take out this program, let's take out music, let's take this out. These are the things that bring students to the school building. And so if we start taking these programs out, students aren't going to want to come. And so one of the things that I'm pushing for is not taking programs out, we're pushing programs into the schools. Like, we need as many programs as possible to get kids excited about learning. No kid ever wakes up and says, ah, I can't wait to read today at school. No. But they'll say, oh, I can't wait for PE today, or I can't wait for music, or I can't wait for basketball practice. And so it's important to ensure that schools have the programs that are bringing kids there. And also beyond that, it's also important that we go beyond punitive measures and look at other ways to involve parents, engage parents. One of my principals said, you know, everybody in the school should be doing a home visit. And when I visited homes, I started to understand reasons why students weren't coming to school. So I was able to help them in the way that I needed to.
Thank you for that. So as we reach this pivotal moment in education, leadership and accountability is at the forefront, especially with policies from Tallahassee. So Dr. Ebry, you would be joining the board at a time where there's a new superintendent that has just assumed leadership responsibility for DCPS. The superintendent is a critical and one of two positions that report to the school board. So tell us about how you would approach building an effective and collaborative relationship with the new superintendent, balancing accountability and support to ensure success in advancing DCPS's mission.
Yeah, so the first thing is transparency and also accountability, ensuring that we're holding the superintendent accountable. But before that, just building a relationship, getting to understand mutual shared goals. Just from listening to him speak a few times, it seems like he's about the students. And so if we are sharing goals, I'm sure we will align on a lot of things. And so ensuring that we're providing constructive feedback to him so that he can continue to support our schools as well. And most of all, like being respectful, having a respectful relationship with the superintendent and ensuring that we can work together to make Duval the best place, or that I know that it can be.
Awesome. And as a school board member, how would you envision yourself working with legislators, government officials, nonprofit organizations, and business leaders to enhance educational opportunities given the unique challenges and opportunities facing traditional public education today?
Yeah, and so working, that's actually my third platform. So I think it's so important. It's so important to be able to work with local policymakers, the ones in Tallahassee, being able to really have them listen to what's actually going on and sharing what's happening in our district and advocating for the students, not just in my district, but in our entire district as well. And also working with nonprofits. I've seen how nonprofits like JPEF and Read USA have really transformed our district. And so it's so important to ensure, especially because we're at a space where we don't have a lot of funding. So it's important to have these partnerships with businesses. They want to help. We have nonprofits who want to help, and we just have to really bridge these gaps and connect all the dots. Growing up, there's like this old adage that says, you know, it takes a village to raise a child. It's true. We need the entire village. We need business leaders. We need nonprofits. We need everybody to ensure that our district gets to the place that it needs to be and gets out of the hole that we're in right now.
Awesome. And you've made a perfect segue. So what is your perspective on school choice and the use of publicly funded vouchers? How should the school board work with legislation to provide support and accountability to all schools receiving public funds?
Absolutely. All right, so I just want to start by, so I was looking into HB1, which is the House Bill 1. And so in Florida, this expanded school choice by removing the financial eligibility restrictions and enrollment limits, allowing any student who is eligible allowing any student who is eligible for public school to receive this voucher. So this means no matter a student's income level, they can get this voucher, which is taking a lot more money away from the public school system. And so I know that in certain situations, like choice is important. It's important for parents to have choice. So first and foremost, I'm advocating to make Duval County Public Schools the best choice, to have the programs that it needs, to have the innovation that it needs, to ensure that students are learning in a safe environment, to ensure that it's always going to be the number one option. But in regards to school choice, like I, I truly don't believe that students who come from wealthy households should get access to this funding and these vouchers. I think it should be based on income and it should also, it should be need-based and it should also be based on ability. So for example, my daughter, she's in the CSS program. She was diagnosed through the school with autism. And so like school, like if there was a private school down the street that offered, that was for students with autism, it would make sense to have various options. But it doesn't make sense for somebody who comes from a high-income household just to be using it to save money. I don't agree with that.
So moving forward, how would you advocate for greater fiscal transparency from charter schools regarding the use of sales tax funds? And what measures would you support to ensure all types of schools, that being traditional public, charter, and private, report student outcomes effectively to assure parents and the community of quality, of the quality of education children are receiving?
Yeah, so one, I would suggest that they have a detailed report, really showing how their funds are being used. And it should be public. It should be public, just like ours is, so that we can, the community can see how this money is being used. Because if it's our tax dollars that's funding it, we deserve transparency. Also, there should be regular audits. And also in regards to student outcomes and transparency, that should be public as well. We should be able to see how, how their students are performing and if our dollars are going toward it as well.
Thank you so much. So this next question comes to us from our partners at the Duval County Council of PTAs. Sometimes candidates run for school board with limited hands-on experience in our schools, whether as a parent, volunteer, teacher, or in some other capacity. Can you tell us specifically what schools in DCPS you have worked with or in? And what role you were in and what impact you made and how you were affected by the experience?
Absolutely. And so when I graduated from UNF, I got hired at Woolen Acres. I taught there for three years. So at the time, it was the largest Title I elementary school in Duval County. It was in a historically marginalized, it had historically, students from historically marginalized families. And so when I worked there, I desired, and I purposely went to Title I schools because I wanted to work with students who grew up similar to how I did and I wanted to make a large impact. And so when I went there, my first year, I did a lot of learning. I had a lot of programs that supported and guided me through the process as a first-year teacher. And then afterwards, I got the support that I needed to thrive. My students ended up being some of the top performers in the entire school. Another Duval County Public School that I worked at was Southside Middle School. I taught there for three years. I taught sixth grade math, seventh grade math, eighth grade algebra. And during my final year at Southside Middle School, I was actually the Teacher of the Year of the school. And then I went on to becoming one of the semi-finalists for Duval County. And then I went on to becoming one of the top five finalists out of the 180 schools, Teachers of the Year from the 180 schools in Duval County. And then I also, I left from there and started to work for our district and the Technology Department. And so in that role, I started to, I helped to build a lab in our Technology Department so that students can learn about computer science and different methods to learn whatever subject area they were learning. And I also work with teachers throughout our district and using technology to make learning innovative.
Awesome. Thank you. Alright, so the next question comes to us from the NAACP. What does community engagement mean to you? Why is it important? And how would you achieve this goal as a board member for your district? Please share what types of activities you would implement to keep your constituents knowledgeable of the DCPS policies, programs, goals, et cetera.
Right. Thank you for asking that question. And so community involvement is extremely important to me. It was reflected in the way I taught. It's reflected in my role even currently. And it's also reflected in my campaign, even as I've been running. I've been ensuring to keep the community engaged by doing things that are fun for them to get involved. And so in regards to, from a school board member's perspective, it's super important to ensure that the community is engaged in the policymaking process. For the longest, I, I didn't feel like I really had a say in anything. I was an educator in the classroom, feeling all the effects of the policies, not even knowing how to even get involved or where to start. It was actually a program called AMP Ed that taught me how to become involved, taught me how to get involved, how to advocate in 2020. And that's when I really started to become engaged and eventually decided to run. And so holding forums so that the community can hear what's going on, being able to go into communities. We shouldn't just be going into communities when we're campaigning and then the community doesn't hear from us again. When I asked a lot of our neighbors who, who their school board members are, they don't know. And so it's important to ensure that we're pushing into communities, going to neighborhoods, and the same effort that we're putting in now to get elected should be the same effort that we're, that we're putting in to get the community involved in the policymaking process so that their voices are reflected when we're sitting on the board.
Thank you for that. And so from your experience, as you may know, teachers are the number one most important factor in our schools for student learning. Data shows that fewer young people are pursuing education careers and that approximately 50% of teachers leave Duval County Public Schools within the first five years. We also know that a diverse teaching workforce can improve outcomes for students and our teacher workforce isn't as diverse as our student body. What can DCPS do to recruit and retain a high-quality and diverse teaching force?
So I would say one, paying them what they're worth. Teachers should not be working two, three, sometimes four jobs to make ends meet. So as everything else is going up, so should their pay. So that's first and foremost. We need to pay people what they're worth. Ensuring that there's programs, mentoring programs. So we know that a lot of teachers leave within the first five years. So ensuring that they're getting the support and the mentorship that they need. I know there's a few like awesome principals who are sitting in here right now who are known to give, to known to mentor teachers. And so we, we need principals to support, to support and mentor other principals so that they can get, so that they can get the support that teachers need in the school building. And so also ensuring that teachers get the professional development that they need. I know when I first became a teacher, I, I'm pretty open about it. I struggled my first year. I didn't know what I was doing. But I had a principal who supported me. I had mentorship programs. I was able to shadow teachers. I got everything that I needed to scaffold me into teaching so that I felt confident. I learned about classroom management, which I don't really like using the word classroom management, but classroom really, how to build classroom relationships to ensure that teachers are staying. And so really advocating for teachers to get everything that they need and going back to the basics, ensuring that we're listening to teachers. Because teachers will tell you exactly what they need, exactly what you need to do to have them stay. And we have to ensure that we're listening to them so that we're keeping them in the school building.
Okay, thank you. And in addition to that, according to the 2024 State of the American Teacher Survey, teachers are two times more likely to report job-related stress and burnout compared to peers in other professions. Given that Duval and the count, and the country are facing a historic teacher shortage, what are your plans for improving the working conditions for teachers?
Yeah, and so again, this will start by, we have to start by listening to the teachers because they'll tell you what's happening, why they're getting burnt out. A lot of times, sometimes it's paperwork, sometimes it's student behavior. And student behavior was a big one. I actually had a conversation with a, with a large group of teachers and one of the main things that they were talking about is student behavior and that's something that's not really addressed a lot. So we have to ensure that we're looking at the policies and we have to make sure that the policies are being enforced so that not, not just that students are safe, but our teachers have to feel like they're in an environment where they're safe, safe as well. And so ensuring that we're, we're listening to them. And so increasing their planning time. And so a lot of times, teachers don't even have time to plan. On my final year in the classroom before I went on to becoming a district specialist, like I didn't have time. And during my planning time, I was using that time to watch other teachers' classes. These are the things that they're not talking about. Because of the teacher shortage, when you have a permanent sub in a classroom or you have no teacher in a classroom or teachers are so tired, they're not coming to work, other teachers are having to watch their class during their planning time. And so what happens? We have to take this work at home. We're planning at home with our kids. And so ensuring, ensuring that they have planning time, ensuring that we're investing in our teachers, ensuring that we're teaching, treating our subs correctly so that we can have substitute teachers who actually want to come back into our schools. And so really looking at all these barriers that are causing these, these gaps that are causing teachers to burn out in the classroom.
Excellent. Thank you. And for our attendees, I want to again remind you, if you have a question, go ahead and take a moment to write it down. We are getting to the end of our questions and we will be transitioning to audience questions shortly. So the next two questions come to us from our partners at the Jacksonville Civic Council and 904. I'll start with what is happening in Duval County Public Schools that you're proud of? And how should DCPS approach the task of better conveying what's right with our public schools?
Absolutely. And so in regards to things that I'm proud of, we have a lot of innovative programs in our schools. We look, at every single school, there's something innovative there. We look at Springfield Middle School. We see that they have the Minecraft lab where students are learning how to code. Taught over 2,000 students how to code in that lab. We see computer science programs. We see dance, dance programs and kid, the arts and kids are singing and, and just all of these amazing things that are happening in our schools. We also see that our scores are rising. We heard even Cindy talking about how the reading scores are going at. Community partnerships. We have the most amazing partners in Duval County Public Schools. And so yes, it's important to market all the amazing things that are happening. And then also ensure that these things are happening across all of our schools every single day and ensuring that all of our schools have the programs that they need to really bring more people in.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And what are the two to three things that you would focus on that you believe are holding us back from being as great as we can be?
Yeah, so the two to three things, I would say one, bridging this gap between our school districts and the community. And when I say the community, I mean everybody, like businesses, policymakers, like community members who just sit at their house. I don't, everybody. So it's ensuring to, that we're bringing in the community so that we can restore community back into our educational process. In recent years, the community has been pretty divided and politics has divided a lot of the community and we really need to restore that. And so when we listen to everybody, a lot of people are saying the same things. They want kids to be in an environment where they feel like they, they belong, where they feel loved, where they're learning. And so it's ensuring that we're looking at what brings us together and bringing all the community in this process to rebuild our schools, to ensure that kids are getting equitable access to a great education so that no one feels like they have to leave their neighborhood school to find a quote-unquote "better option." Their neighborhood school should be the best option. And also to ensure that students are safe and they feel like they can go to school without being bullied or, or, or getting hurt or anything like that and that our teachers are safe as well.
Thank you for that. And before we move into the audience questions, our partners are passing out little slips of paper with QR code on them. We ask that you please take a picture of that QR code and give us, and fill out that quick survey for us to give some feedback to us and our partners regarding these forms. They will help us improve and do things and get information back so that we may move forward from form to form, year to year, and, and build our database with your feedback and your responses. So please take the time out to fill out those surveys. We would love to hear back from you. And we can actually do some things moving forward just from your responses and cater to, to what you have given back to us. So now you can fill those out as we do our questions, but now we'll go into the audience questions. So with our first one here, it says, "Students, our students missing school has a lot to do with transportation issues, not what interests them with shortage of bus drivers." How, how will you deal with this issue of absenteeism? I'm sorry.
So there's a, there's a lot of reasons why students miss school. And so in regards to the buses, one thing that we will do is really work closely with the bus companies. Work, collaborate with the bus companies to see what's happening. I even talked to someone recently and they said they were losing a lot of bus drivers due to student behavior. I know how hard it is for me to drive my car with my daughter in the backseat, especially when she's not having a good day. I can't imagine a bus driver being responsible for transporting 30-plus kids to school and there's fights happening on the bus and other things happening. So one, ensuring that our, our bus drivers are getting paid what they need to be paid, but also ensuring that we're, we're enforcing policies to ensure that they feel safe and that they're able to get students to school on time. So this is the reality. My classroom was right next to the bus loop. I saw a lot that was happening at my school. I've been at a lot of other schools. I've listened to teachers and also bus drivers. And so it's important to ensure that, that we're keeping our bus drivers and ensuring that we're, we're, we're paying them something that's competitive so that we can get more of them to come. But I, I will say that some students miss school just because they want to miss school. And so they, there's other, there's programs and different things that, or they're not excited about coming to school. And so we have to get them excited about coming to school. So just being an educator in the classroom, I've taught, I've spoken to a lot of our students. I, I have open-kinded conversation with our students and they would say, "I just didn't feel like coming to school today," or "I was too tired." And so there's many reasons.
Awesome. Next question from the audience is, "As a board member for District 1, what methodology or methods of communication will you use to get parental and community feedback and input concerning the needs of District 1 schools and their stakeholders?"
Yes, so one, doing surveys. That's, that's been super important, but also going into the community. And also having virtual options as well. So we know all parents, especially after a long day at work, when you pick up your students from school, everybody can't make it to in-person meetings. So creating virtual options so that people can hear the policies that are going to be voted on to, so that they can give their perspective. So creating virtual options for the community to get engaged.
Thank you for that. This question from the audience. Cognia, which is the regional accreditation agency that accredits all Duval County schools, has specific standards that address the governance board and leadership role. Please share your perception as to what behaviors or actions by the board members would violate those standards.
Sorry, can you read the question one more time?
Let me read it one more time. Cognia, which is the regional accreditation agency that accredits all Duval County schools, has specific standards that addresses the governance board and leadership roles. Please share your perception as to what behaviors or actions by board members would violate those standards.
So one, I think it's important, as a school board member who's making policies that are affecting your entire district, in the entire Duval County, it's important that you, we have very high standards, just like how we have high standards for teachers. We have high standards for students. For example, if a teacher was at the January 6 riots, like I think that they don't deserve to be in our classroom. Similar to if somebody on our board was there, I don't think they deserve to be on our board. And so I think it's very important to have very high standards for our teachers, our board. And I think it's, I think it's important to, for the communities to speak up and speak out when we hear things. I think a lot of times people get scared to speak truth to power. And so I think it's important to have people on the board that's not afraid to speak the truth.
Thank you. From your, from your lens as a candidate for the Duval County School Board District 1, what do you see as the strengths and challenges of the Duval County Public School System? Also a question that came to us from the audience.
The strengths and challenges of the Duval County Public School System? And so I, I think Duval County is a great district, which is why I worked for Duval County for 10 years. And so it has a lot of strengths. Like I, like I love the partnerships that they have. I love the programs that are at various schools. And so I think Duval County is doing a really great job. I just think there's areas that need to be fixed. For example, we need to ensure that the programs that we're seeing at some schools are, are everywhere. And so when I say that, for example, you may go to one school and you may see students are learning STEM and robotics and they, they're getting like really great reading instruction. And you may go to another school and students are getting drilling- And you may go to another school and students are getting drill and kill instruction. Or some, some students don't even have a teacher in the classroom. Some students are literally in a classroom with permanent subs all year. This is what's happening. And some parents don't even, uh, like probably aren't aware of it or they don't know that they can advocate for their child to say, like, this is not okay. And so we need to ensure that all students are learning in a classroom with teachers and that we're seeing great education happening across the board. Because one year of, of being in a classroom with a permanent sub, that could ruin a child for life. That could ruin a child for life if they're not, they didn't get that a year's worth of reading instruction. They didn't get a year's worth of math instruction and now they're spending the rest of their days trying to catch up. And so ensuring that all schools are, are, are having the programs and that we're spending our time as board members, not attacking underrepresented groups, but focusing on very important issues like kids not having teachers in the classroom.
Thank you. That's a great segue into this next audience question, which is what is your view on merit pay for teachers? Do you believe in using incentives to attract highly effective teachers or teachers in shortage fields such as math and science?
So no, I don't agree with merit pay. And the reason why I'm saying that is because, uh, like how are we defining like merit? Are we defining their scores, their student scores? Because for example, I could be in a, a school where, for example, my daughter in the back, she knew how to read before she even entered school. And so her teacher, like it's going to have a really great time if she's trying to teach her how to read because she already knows how to read. However, you have certain, um, students at certain schools where a lot of them struggle with reading before even coming into the schools. And so the teachers will work their tails off trying to ensure that students are getting the education that they deserve, but their scores may not be the best, even though the teacher put in a lot of work. And so that's what's been happening with, um, e- even the, the current system. Some teachers feel like they put in everything they can, especially when they're at certain schools that, uh, where student, a lot of students struggle. And they're like, well, you know, I, I tried everything I, I could do and my students are still struggling. My pay is based on it. Let me go ahead and, uh, go to another school where the students are doing better. And so I think it's, I don't agree with using merit pay to define a teacher.
Next question from the audience says, what is your vision for education in District One? How does it support the economy and quality of life in District One?
Absolutely. And so, uh, in regards to my vision, I desire to, education is the great equalizer. So as I said before, like my, my parents, uh, came here from, uh, from Jamaica. Uh, they moved to New York, uh, with me and my five siblings and search for a better life. And, um, education really took us out of the situation that we're in and got us to where we are right now. And so I know that education is the great equalizer. My mom believed in it. I believe in it. And, um, because it's a great equalizer, I know that if we ensure that students are prepared for the future, they'll be able to find jobs where they can graduate and they could add to our economy and they can have lucrative jobs where they can create generational wealth for their families and bring their families out of poverty. And so education is, is extremely important and it's, it's important to ensure that we're doing everything that we need to do for the kids to be able to have the education they need to succeed in the future.
Thank you. Um, next audience question is, do you believe all children can perform at grade level, including those in low performing, high poverty schools?
Say it one more time.
All right. Do you believe that all children can perform at grade level, including those in low performing, high poverty schools?
Absolutely, absolutely. I've seen it. I've seen it, uh, being an educator in the classroom. I would have students who were, who went from reading at a first grade level to, uh, to reading at a third, fourth grade level, to getting a one, to moving up to a three, four. So I believe that in a classroom where they have all the tools that they need to succeed, yes, I believe that all students can succeed and this doesn't, this isn't just a saying that I'm saying. I truly believe it because I've seen it.
Thank you so much. A next audience question, what is your plan to, or how will you address the issue of enrollment? Specifically increasing the enrollment in our schools?
Yeah, so in regards to increasing enrollment, I think I mentioned it already, so I'm not going to go too deep in, uh, go too deep into it. But I believe that, um, one, if we start by listening to the parents, listening to the teachers, listening to all the stakeholders, um, especially to the parents who are possibly even thinking about taking their kids out of the school and who have taken their kids out of the school already and who want to bring them back because it's not, oh, the grass isn't always greener on the other side. I think it's important to listen to them to see why they've been taking their kids out and to start working on fixing those issues. So if it's student behavior, then we need to focus and look at that. If it's programs, we need to look at that. If it's transportation, we need to look at that. But we need to start fixing these issues to ensure that we're bringing everybody back and to ensure that nobody else wants to leave because Duval County can and will be the best district in the world. And I truly believe that it can if we have the right people in place.
Thank you for that. Next audience question is, recently the legislation has changed the policy for the distribution of sales tax, surtax, sales surtax funds that provides favorable consideration for charter schools at the expense of traditional public schools. How will you work with your colleagues on the board to address this imbalance and ensure charter schools are held to the identical accountability standards as traditional public schools?
Yeah, so advocating, advocating, having school board members who, one, don't agree with it because some of them do. And then, um, two, advocating. Um, so advocating, uh, bringing people on board, bringing in research. Because sometimes, you know, a lot of times people make decisions, but it's not based on facts. So bringing the factual information to the board and advocating in Tallahassee to ensure that we're, we're bringing our dollars back into the public school system so that our students get the education that they deserve and so that we could be having other conversations before the year starts, rather than the closing of schools and because of the lack of funding that we have.
Awesome. Next audience question. Do you want teachers and other support staff to be armed in the classroom?
No. So, um, I, as a teacher, we already have, and I always talk from the perspective of a teacher because I recently left the classroom, but, uh, from, uh, teachers already have enough on their plate. Arming teachers isn't, not something that we should be doing. First of all, it can cause so many other issues. What if a, what if a student gets their gun? Now what's going to happen? Like it can lead to, it's going to be a slippery slope. So absolutely not. Teachers do not need to be armed.
With the sub shortage, have you considered instead of outsourcing that service, have DCPS employ them directly and use the money that would otherwise go to the third-party company, adding it directly to subpay as an incentive?
I think that's a great idea. Um, yeah. I didn't consider that, but yes, that's a great idea. Thank you. It looks like the question answered the question.
Okay. All right, next audience question. How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district?
To get involved? Everybody can get involved. I've seen so many different programs in schools where, where dads will come in and they'll kind of monitor the halls where we don't need police officers. If we bring the community in, um, you'll be surprised how much having a few dads in the hallway, how many fights will be reduced. There's been research to prove it. And so really finding community options, reading books with the kids. We've seen organizations like Read USA. I went and volunteered at my daughter's school with Read USA and the smile that she gave when she saw me just volunteering at her school. So just being able to, uh, be, like, get involved in the schools, see other organizations that are volunteering, volunteer, uh, that are, uh, pushing in volunteers into the schools and volunteering with them. And, uh, just imagine if everybody in the community volunteered at least one hour in the schools, I can guarantee you our schools would be a better place, even reading to the kids. Um, we talk about literacy, like, uh, something as simple as sitting and reading a book with students. Uh, if you read with students for 15 minutes a day, you'll be surprised at the growth by the end of the year. So being able to volunteer and support in schools, uh, will be a great way for the community to support.
Awesome. And kind of touched on this earlier, but how will you address the lack of student engagement and absenteeism from our school system?
Uh, so rethinking how we're teaching students. Um, we have, uh, we, we have to move out of like these archaic mindsets. There's no reason why the schools still look like how they did in the ni- early 1900s. Like we have to rethink how we're teaching students. I went to a school in West Palm Beach where students had a VR headset on and they were learning how to do math. They were so engaged. And so, um, a lot, there's this misconception that students have a short attention span. They don't. Like students, you give them some work to do. You say, hey, read this book. You'll see them, they'll pay attention for two minutes. So throw the book to the side. You give them a game, you'll see them playing games for nine hours. So there's nothing wrong with their attention span. The fact is, we're, we're not necessarily using the, the resources and the materials that we can use to make learning more engaging for students. And so one, rethinking the materials and the resources that we're using so that students will and, and can be more engaged in the learning process.
Thank you. Um, next question from the audience. What are your three overall education priorities that you'd like to accomplish while in office? How would you achieve those items and why are they important to you?
Yeah, and so, uh, number one, bringing in the community. And all I'm saying is my platform back out to y'all. If y'all have my cards, like, but it's super, super important. We can't do anything without the community. And so the reason why it's so important to me is because the community raised me. Um, I remember one day I was in high school and I was, uh, skipping school to go to the library to study for a test because I, I didn't feel prepared. And, um, the librarian said, uh, your mom, does your mom know you're here? You need to go to school. And so it was very important to me to just have the community. Uh, Dr. Bell taught me about black history. I didn't get it in school. I had to get it from an outside organization. Like I had my pastor who helped to raise me too, uh, of course, and my dad. And, uh, so it's, it's super important just to have the entire community because it really takes the community, churches, businesses, everybody pushing into schools to raise, uh, to raise a child, um, to ensure students are getting STEM. Um, right now, we see massive shortages. Just in cybersecurity, we have thousands of vacancies here in Duval County and over 3.5 million globally, just in cyber, not even talking about other tech jobs. So kids who love technology, who didn't get exposed to it, are graduating and there's like this gap between, um, the skills that students have when they graduate from schools and the jobs that exist now and also the jobs that are going to exist in the future. So being able to ensure that students are prepared.
Well, that wraps up our audience Q and A. I know it's been long. Um, but now, uh, we'll move on to your closing remarks and you will have two minutes, um, to make your closing remarks.
Absolutely. So I just want to say thank you all for coming here today. I know it was only me, but I appreciate you for just sitting through and just, uh, listening to my voice and my perspectives and just why I'm running. Um, but this is the most critical election ever. And so, uh, there was once a time where we would have, you know, Democrat versus Republican. You have two people who love the students and it's like, may the best man win. But we're not necessarily seeing that anymore. Uh, we're seeing a lot of extremist groups that are really pushing into our boards, uh, really getting ready to push harmful policies that are really going to affect our students. And so this is not a normal election. And so I think it's so important just to have somebody who's willing to speak up for our students. I have a daughter who's about to go, who's going through Duval County Public Schools and I want to make sure that she's in a system that truly cares about her, that she's not being affected by policies that are trying to get rid of inclusion. I want to ensure that she's going through, uh, a system that all of our students in Duval County are going through a system where they feel loved, where they feel like they belong, no matter who they are, no matter what their background is, no matter what they believe. It's important to, to really work with our students and, and, and teachers and our leaders throughout our district to ensure that our kids are getting the best education possible. So thank you for, for attending and I appreciate all of you. And please vote on August 20th and yes, thank y'all.
Well, thank you once again. On behalf of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund, we want to thank, uh, Dr. Ebry for coming out on this evening and participating in our community forum. We want to thank the Citadel Church for hosting us on this evening. Bishop Hill, we want to thank you all for opening up your wonderful facility and he has, he made the outreach earlier. We'd like to thank all the attendees who took the time to attend in person and to log on online. We want to remind you, uh, and the importance of voting during this election. August 5th through August 18th is early voting and, uh, you are to deadline, you have a deadline to, um, request a, uh, vote by mail ballot on August 8th by 5:00 PM. And the deadline to return that vote by mail ballot is August 20th by 7:00 PM. And election day is August 20th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Stand in line, don't get out of line, make sure you cast your vote. We also want to make you aware of the questionnaires that you received coming into the door on today. They are from both candidates. Seeing that Mr. Ricardo was not here, you are able to at least see some of his responses to Jacksonville Public Education Fund's questions, questionnaire that is also posted on our website at jaxpeff.org/vote. So please make plans to, today to vote and get others in your network informed and ready to cast an informed vote as well. Please remember that kids cannot vote, but we can. You can, adults, you can for your best interest of your children. So on behalf of Jacksonville Public Education Fund, we thank you and we hope that you have a great evening.